Good evening and welcome to March 18th work session. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This evening we have a presentation for an educational opportunity to learn more about the stormwater system and how it works. And at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Rankin to present.
Okay, Mr. Whitaker. Good evening.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, Mayor. What we'd like to do tonight, we thank you for the opportunity to just provide you an overview of the city's stormwater utility and just use this more as, like the city manager said, an educational process. Basically, our agenda is that we would like to show you some basics of stormwater, show you examples of why we need our stormwater utility, and then show you some examples of common solutions that benefit the community. And basically, the whole presentation can be summarized by stating that our stormwater utility has basically two purposes: protect people from flooding and protect our streams from people, is what we'd like to look at. So, start off with, let me go to this first board over here that says "How Water Gets To Our Rivers and Streams." And just to kind of go over some basics to make sure everybody understands, you've got the treed and grassy areas that obviously will drain to the stream. You've got rooftops, driveways, and streets that primarily will drain, obviously, to the streets, then go into the inlets and down through the piping, and that all ends up in the streams at some point in time. Basically, when we look at what we're trying to control with stormwater, a lot of it is what we refer to as the impermeable surfaces, which are your roofs and concrete and like that, where the water obviously doesn't penetrate and just obviously goes right out to the street. And obviously, once it gets into the pipes, most of our pipes are going to be concrete, so it's just going to take it directly to the stream. And then basically, stormwater, just so that, just again, trying to make it as plain as we can, is rain that runs off all of these surfaces and eventually ends up in our rivers and streams throughout the city and throughout the nation for that matter. And as it travels, it picks up a lot of contaminants, et cetera, as we go through all of these piping systems. And just some basic information is we have over 250 miles of underground piping and about 12,000 inlets that we have to maintain. This next board here that we've got marked as "Streams," these are the streams that basically, that we deal with throughout the city of Topeka. And basically, you can see there's some major, the lakes, if you could point those out down, there's Lake Shawnee, I always say it backwards, Lake Sherwood, and then, of course, the Kansas River are three probably of the major waterways there. And then, basically, our primary waterway, which you can go to that next board, our primary waterway is the Shanga, which is marked there in the red, and these are the different basins that are throughout the city. And each one of these basins, basically, everything drains within that basin to the major stream and goes off to the river. So if you get down here in the south Shanga, all the way down at the bottom of the board, eventually gets over there to the Kansas River. So it's gonna, you know, any water that isn't absorbed to the ground is going to drain all the way over. There are 10 basins, and obviously, as I said, each of these basins drain to the river. And now, we'll take a closer look at the Oakland Basin. And this is just to kind of give you an example. In your slide, it should look like this, it's got a little star on it, I think it's page five?
Three.
Three, okay. There's two per page, and I've only got one, so page three, thank you. You see the little star, that is City Hall. And what we're trying to show there is that City Hall would drain through the various inlets, pipes, et cetera, and ends up in the Shanga, and then obviously drains on to the river. And if you go to the next slide, there's an aerial of City Hall, and you can see there is some green space around City Hall, but obviously, there's a considerable amount of impervious surfaces. And so, again, there's parking lots, there's roofs, there's the streets, all of that, and obviously, it, all of that drains, and so we're taking oils and dirts and rubber and sand and whatever is out there. And Don will show you a little example of what we collected off of the street here in a minute. But, you know, all of that ends up in our streams. And so, basically, that is the whole purpose of the stormwater utility is, not only is it managing the quantity of water, which Don's going to get into here now, but also just the quality of water that we're putting back into our streams. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Don and let him go through the purpose of the stormwater utility.
Rankin, please.
Thank you. As Doug was stating, our stormwater utility basically has two purposes. One is to protect the streams from contamination, and number two is to protect people from flooding, floodwaters caused by the rain. These are, protecting the streams from stormwater basically comes under what's called an NPDS permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, as required by the federal government. This is one of the rules that the EPA comes in and basically forces regulatory requirements on the city to protect their streams. But we have another reason also, I mean, there are streams in our rivers, so we want to protect our rivers and streams so they're beautiful for the city of Topeka. Doug was talking about some of those streets, the street runoff and all the things that come off those streets, any of the cars parking, the rubber, the pesticides, the herbicides. I want to give you an example. This basically, we took a big bucket of water and flushed it down and then collected it just before it went into an inlet, okay? As it goes into the inlet and into the pipe, it's going to get stirred up, and this is what's going into our stream. A lot of people think that what's going in the inlet is going over to the wastewater treatment plant, but that's not true. We do actually have a couple areas like that, but most of the city, whatever's out on the street, whatever nasty things are out on the street, get, basically, it's chicken up with the stormwater or the rainwater coming down, goes down in that inlet, goes down the pipe, and hits the stream. So, you know, part of that job is to protect them, so... Doug went over some of the things that we have. We also have metals, nutrients, pesticides, herbicides that come in. And then, I want to show you here an example. On the screen up there, you can see that the, this is blue-green algae. This is in a pond in Topeka at one of our community centers, and this is basically nutrient buildup. This is nasty material. You would not want your dogs or your kids in there, they could become sick from ingesting this. And obviously, it indicates a problem with the flows that are going into our streams. The next example is a picture taken, I think this was on Ward Creek, those little white specks you see all along those, those are fish. You can see a little bit of trash debris, but those are all fish, dead fish in our streams. And if you take a look at this, I don't know, that'd look real good to swim in, does it? This example that I'm showing now is, one of the programs required under our NPDS permit by the federal government is an erosion control. And obviously, it's quite an inconvenience for a lot of our construction activity, but you can see in this photo, that sediment coming down, all of that dirt that was flowing, this is actually being contained mostly by that sediment fencing that you see along the sidewalk there, and keeping it from going into the stream. They have to keep it on-site, and then they have to dispose of it appropriately. This is in Ward Creek, one of our creeks around. Now, that stormwater inlet, you'll notice, is sitting out in the middle of the stream. Now, I thought at first maybe we designed it that way, but probably not. That's actually, that inlet was represented the sidebank of the stream at one time. So if you can imagine all the dirt, all of the soil, all the sediment that had to be eroded away and has gone downstream, down the stream of the Ward Creek. Okay, our second function that we want to talk about, that was, that's some of the, just in short, some of the water quality problems that we're seeing in some of the creeks and the streams around Topeka. The second one is protecting the property from flooding. Unprotected flooding, I mean, these can cost millions of, millions of dollars to our residents. And we have two types of flood events that we're basically looking to control. One of them is more of a localized flooding within a neighborhood. A second type of flooding is from a nearby stream or river. The stream overcomes the banks and floods into the neighborhood. Okay, I'll give you an example. This is one of more of a localized flooding. This one's actually caused by a clogged inlet, and so some folks had to go out, clear the inlet, and then it drains it. A lot of these are projects where, you know, it's part of the ongoing maintenance, keep the inlets clear, otherwise that water backs up, and it backs up onto people's property, into their homes and into their basement. One of the interesting things here is one inch of rain, one inch of rain over Topeka is about a billion gallons. So when we get one inch of rain in Topeka, there's about a billion gallons of water going to hit our creeks, total sum. This next picture backs up on kind of a larger scale. We're all familiar with the flood remapping effort that went on. All of those red areas you see, those are areas that have been deemed high-hazard areas for flooding. We had about 3,200 residents within the city of Topeka that were added into those, they're subject to flood map, flood insurance at this point. The area up there that you see in blue is the areas that are protected by our levee system. So our Kansas levee system protects all of those areas in blue. If the levee wasn't there, all of those folks would be subject to flooding, they would also be subject to the flood insurance. This is just to focus in on the levee system, because we spend so much money here, it might be a little bit difficult to tell, but that does include areas of downtown, includes all of north Topeka, our areas that are protected by this levee system. As you're aware, obviously, we have the design going on with the Corps of Engineers, and we're actually waiting for funding for construction on this project through Congress on the WADA, or the Water Resources Development Act. Another one that's very significant for some of our citizens and residents here in Topeka is the Shanga Creek. Some of you are aware, 2007, we had some severe flooding. The Corps has modeled that. We've been working with the Corps on how to mitigate that. They have modeled it, it models basically to be about a 100-year event or a very large storm event. The flood insurance maps caused approximately, it was about 3,200 people, additional properties were mapped into the flood zone and now subject to flood insurance. And we have met with some of those folks in their neighborhood, and their house prices are dropping, et cetera, so pretty severe issue. Give you an idea, this is the Shanga Creek. Once again, might be a little difficult to tell on there, but many new neighborhoods, it's an actual, actually a fairly wide area of Topeka, through the center of Topeka that is now within the flood area. So at this point, we'd like to talk a little bit about some of the solutions and directions. EPA pushes very hard for green solutions. They want cities to implement green solutions, and that is a direction that we're looking to go, is how do we implement some of these green solutions into some of the projects that we do to take care of some of the problems that we're experiencing? Whoops. A couple of these are some basic things that we're doing is stream buffers. The city council passed a stream buffers ordinance some years ago. We now require stream buffers along our streams. We're reviewing those to identify where we're getting some of the pollutants that are still entering the streams. But these are, these are things where we have to learn how we're going to work with the community, because it does force people to develop further back from the streams. We have many areas of Topeka that were not subject to this rule back when they developed many, many years ago, and so they're up near the stream banks. Many people are required now, through some of our new development rules, to develop their properties further back. Obviously, in those areas, we want to put some amenities. We had trails and those types of things where people can come in and enjoy the streams in the wildlife. Another example being the bioretention cells. These are actually very effective to come in to some areas that are fairly well-developed. They basically take in some of the stormwater, they detain it, it allows it to infiltrate down into the ground. Some of the grasses actually encourage evapotransportation up into the, into the sky, and obviously, we'd like these to be people-friendly spaces that people can enjoy. Here's an example of Garfield Park, many of you are familiar with this. This was a area where the Garfield Stream, as it came by through a neighborhood, some homes flooded in there quite often. The solution was basically a $4 million project to put in a pump station and detention basins to pump the water. That was the initial project. That was stopped, and we went forth with a green solution that basically widened this into a wetlands area with a lot of different plantings, certain stormwater features we were looking for to capture pollutants. And then, the next slide, this is that same park flooded, okay? The water in this park is keeping homes from being flooded. So the idea being is that we create an area that's going to have a water quality benefit, but when it floods, that area will flood instead of homes. This project, by the way, instead of $4 million for a pump station, was $2 million. Currently, you know, we've been regrouping in the stormwater utility, and, you know, tonight we wanted to introduce you, just to give you an overview of the purpose of the utility, which was twofold: protect people from flooding and to protect our streams from people. But this is a list of some of the projects we have going on currently. You're all familiar with the Kansas River levee system in design, a very expensive partnership with the federal government. We have the Shanga Flood Study, that's been delayed, but the results of that will be out here within the next couple months. Government shutdown, kind of delayed that project. So we're hoping to present that to you in the near future. Replacement of stormwater piping, we spent about $1.2 million last year replacing stormwater piping underneath some of the half-cent sales tax projects. So, once we redo that street, we're getting new water lines, we're also getting new stormwater infrastructure. Another one is the, we're developing some of the flood collection tools. I know a number of you have asked me about some of the localized flooding. We do have data points, but we don't have a lot of good analytical data, so we're going to be backing up and looking at how in every one of these flood events, do we collect better data that tells us more? Some of these, we have a point, we have a point on a map that says there was flooding, but we don't know if the flooding was because of clogged inlets, or was it because of the size of the rain event and something we simply couldn't control? Another one is water treatment plant rehab of some flood relief wells, and then also one that the council recently approved as one of our Kansas River levee system pump stations, we're rehabbing that project. Couple of water quality ones we have is incorporating some of the green designs. Seward Avenue, they have the beautification project, they also have the repaving of that. We're looking to do, they also have some stormwater issues and some localized flooding in those areas. We're looking to apply some green solutions down there, so more to come on that one. And then Woodbury Court. This was a, this is a localized flood control-type project that's more of a three-to-five-year type storm event. They were experiencing some severe flooding, it's actually life-threatening if somebody was out on the street. So the purpose of the stormwater utility, protect the people from flooding and to protect our streams from the contamination coming in. That's what we have tonight, and we'd like to take any questions if you have some.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the flood prevention there, you, on the last, on our last slide or page, it says the Shanga Flood Study. Is that being handled by the Corps of Engineers?
The Corps of Engineers, we're doing a partnership, they're paying for actually part of it. They are, they are looking at the mitigation options to the flooding.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is that, of course, the Shanga starts at Lake Sherwood, and it's a big area outside the city.
Right.
So by the Corps, how the mitigation can involve some things in the city, but it really, a lot of that water starts in the county.
Yeah.
Flows into the city, and then we have to handle it as it goes through the city. So the mitigation can be some things out there. Is that, is that correct?
That's, that is correct. We did look at options, Lake Sherwood out in that area was never designed as a flood control-type dam. I don't believe any of the data we showed is that it's contributing significantly to the flood along the Shanga. A lot of it was some of the overdevelopment, you know, that already occurred. Now, we do have, one of the things that's a very valid concern is that we have a lot of areas out in our watersheds that are undeveloped at this time, and a development that does not have to control their stormwater out in those areas certainly would contribute to flooding on the Shanga. So, we do have, you know, we do have city code, part of the building codes, do require some of that detention. This is part of some of our normal stormwater reviews, city engineering reviews those for stormwater quantities, so that they cannot release any more than what the property was releasing in stormwater prior to development.
I know, if I, in 2007, the water went over the spillway at, at Sherwood.
Yes.
So, I mean, I know, so there was a major portion of the flooding in the city was due to the dam could not hold the amount of water from that flood, you know?
And the dams basically, I mean, they serve a purpose that I think it's meant to be mostly recreational, but any freeboard or extra space that that dam has before it overtops is actually detention. It actually is going to, it would reduce the amount of flooding downstream by the amount of freeboard that's on the dam.
That's it, thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? I have one. Whose job is it to keep the inlets unclogged? I get that all the time.
Yeah, that's our, our water pollution control operations and maintenance folks, WPC, they go out and they keep, they do a work order system, they keep records of some of the ones that clog up more frequency, frequently, and then they go out and clear those. And then they also operate based on calls from citizens, and will go out and unclog those.
Okay, Karen?
I had a couple of questions, but I'd like to follow up on the mayors if I could. Does the county do similar sort of regulation and oversight of development there, and do we have any cooperative agreements? Do they ever help out financially or otherwise with these challenges that we are facing with the water coming down?
I'm not an expert on the building rule, but my understanding is they have, they have the same types of requirements for development, where, and the city would actually review those developments, I believe in the three-mile limit. Bill Fandy would know better than I would on that, but, so I think they're subject to the same rules, except some of the, maybe the smaller three-acre type developments, I don't, I don't believe they're subject to those rules. We do partner with the county. Anything that's a stormwater-type complaint or something that's out in the county, we get calls on them, we refer to them, and then we work with them, you know, to correct it.
I was just thinking of the, in my view, kind of stupendous bill we've got for doing these levee studies and so on. It's just not staying on. And whether there was a potential to share, or if no matter what we did, we're still going to be subject to a lack of that work outside our city limits.
Yeah, and, you know, the basins, the basins identified here, it's a little hard to see, but we have some city, the city limits on there, and obviously, the drainage basins for the stormwater don't care about the city limits.
Right.
It's going to drain where it's going to drain, and so, you know, that's, any kind of cooperative agreements we have are good. I know that we have been looking at some of the stream buffer ordinance-type language, I don't recall if they have one, but we were looking to work with them. Their public works and planning folks were agreeable to implementing some type of, putting it forth in front of the commissioners, some type of stream buffers ordinance.
Thank you. I did have an original clarification and question. On your map, that is, would be your page three, our page two, that shows the city and the downtown, it really doesn't show many streams in the middle of the city. Just to clarify, I'm in the Ward Martin Basin, I think, and I recall a major project a few years ago that actually had a retention dam in east Topeka, and then put, put the water underground. Is this not showing streams just because we've got a pretty elaborate storm sewer system?
Yes.
Okay.
It does not show a lot of the old, you know, streams and tributaries that fed these, because they don't physically exist in the same form.
Okay. Then my question for, for future is I'm really intrigued by the fact that we did have that retention dam long ago for Ward Martin, and you're, you're talking about those retention processes here, and we even, years ago, people had mixed feelings about it, but on, on Jackson Street, took a lane out and made a stormwater ditch, if you will, so that the water could percolate instead of run down the street. Is that, you know, we're considering some pretty big street projects now, and over time have talked about the fact that some streets never got storm sewer.
Right.
Is leaving just that natural retention, sort of, has it kind of come full circle and it's now cutting edge? and it's now cutting edge? Is it something we should be looking at?
Absolutely.
For not only property, but streets?
The challenge is, Jackson Street is actually, from a stormwater point of view, very, very effective. It, it, we, we do testing on that, and the pollutants that run in, it does a very effective job of removing pollutants coming off the street in the downtown area. Obviously, our challenge has been, is it's in a very urban downtown environment and making it something where people don't think it looks like weeds. That's been the challenge, and it's been the complaint we've heard. But from a stormwater point of view, it's, you know, I personally, I think it's a terrific-looking amenity for the city of Topeka. It's also extremely effective. In the stormwater arena, we've had many people from all over the country come and see what we've done on Jackson Street.
Well, I, thank you for sharing that. I mean, I realize it's a change of mindset, but I'm really intrigued by that as a pretty cost-effective way to look at this.
We, you know, that's, Seward Avenue is our next, next area that we're actually looking at. How can we incorporate these things in and work with the neighborhood improvement arenas and cause improvements that are agreeable within the community? So, we get some real win-wins is what we're hoping.
I look at all the storm sewer backups that we have in my district, and if we, if we just didn't have them, it seemed like it could help some places.
Some of the designs, I mean, we're looking what some of the other communities have done, some of the tree programs, the planting trees are actually, for stormwater purpose, very effective at removing stormwater. Some of them have incorporated designs along some of the street, takes out some of the street, but very localized. We'll be working with city engineering to look at the possibilities of that, and we want, and we want to make sure they're effective and what their purpose is.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anybody else? Nathan?
Yeah, I was just curious about, do we have any information on what the water quality of, of the Shunga is, since that is our primary, where we, where we send all of our water?
They, the Shunga itself has been identified, the state does water quality measurements. We do those also internally. One of our folks that's here that heads up that effort. But they have identified in the permit, they have identified that fecal coliform is one of the major pollutants of concern. And so, fecal coliform is one of the things that we measure for all the time. We identify and back, backtrack up to try to find the source of it and stop the source of the fecal coliform. Surprisingly enough, we do have also a number of them on the Wacarosa.
Those are some of those areas that are actually south?
Down around the Montero area that have been identified also. They also have principal, what they call principal pollutants of concern, and they've identified a variety of metals and that we have to also take steps to reduce their loading on the creeks.
So, as far as, you know, a stream that runs through the city is the, is the Shunga, better than average, worse than average, or in pretty bad shape?
We, we have some areas that are in, in good shape, but we're going through now and doing a stream assessment. We're actually going to go through and measure, take some type of measurement of the stream quality. I don't know how it relates to some others. Obviously, you know, you see the ones out in Colorado off the mountains or something. Out in a pastureland-type environment, or up in the mountains or something, the stream has been allowed to develop, you know, unencumbered by development. Here in the city, every time we put in a street or additional development, some additional runoff will cause the flow patterns to change in the creek. The creek could then want to change how it wants to flow, and that, sometimes, we have some residents where they're getting erosion into their backyard, they're losing parts of their backyard, because the stream flows want to change. So, that's something where we're wanting to go down through the Shungananga and the tributaries and take an assessment, a condition assessment, all along to look and identify where we have, what's our 80/20 rule? We don't have unlimited money, so the monies we spend where we want to improve the Shungananga, we want to identify where are the worst areas that we need to do that.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Rankin. You kind of, you kind of sparked my interest, or my curiosity, that is. What filtration machinery do we have in the public works to clear it like drainage or stuff like that from people that flush it? Do we have a way to clean that water out?
If it goes down into the stormwater, no, it hits, it goes to the stream. It's basically by volume dilution, but no, we're not treating, anything that goes down in the storm is not treated, it goes directly to the stream. With the exception of areas such as Jackson Street or Garfield Wetlands that I showed up here, they would have a filtration-type effect as it moved through those BMPs, we call them.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Any other questions, Chad? Then Denise?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. What are, what are the odds or what are the possibilities of reversing the floodplain around the Shunga? If we're doing a study, I mean, obviously, that's why we're doing the study, are the indications that there are things that we could potentially do to reduce the size? Because, I mean, when you showed that first map, you have sections of the Shunga that look as wide as Lake Sherwood is, in terms of the floodplain. So, it's the only part of the city that looks like it has a lake that runs through the middle of it when the rains come. So, obviously, I think, you know, there are several council districts affected by that. From my perspective, this should be somewhat of a priority. How can we reverse that trend?
That's the subject of the study with the Corps, and, you know, we, we've taken some steps to stop it from getting worse, and that's through our building code. And we have staff that review those all the time, looking to mitigate that. So, now, what do we do with what we have? That's the results of the Corps study that we would hope to present to you. The Corps has looked, we, we had many discussions with Corps of Engineers, Corps of Engineers talking about various options, areas outside where, you know, there isn't any development. Can we build a dam? Can, you know, there's a lot of different things. All of those, you know, have a cost-reward, so, and that's what we would hope to present to you here in the future, after we get those results.
Well, and I would hope that, that my colleagues and I would think, in the broader scheme of, it's not just the cost versus reward in terms of how you mitigate the flooding. We need to look at it from a perspective of when the floodplain comes in, and I now have to get flood insurance. I think we had a, I had a constituent here a couple of weeks ago that said, my property value has dropped.
Yes.
So, there's the compounding loss that the community takes when more folks are having to get flood insurance that doesn't come into the playing of what's the best way that we can mitigate stormwater. But I think it should come into play when this body takes action, so that we can protect the values of people's homes.
And we'll plan to present those to you. I mean, we've been doing, trying to do some research on all of that.
Great. All right, thank you.
Denise?
I'll be quick, I know we're about out of time. I guess, I was sort of following up from Councilman Schmidt, because I, I, I'm concerned about the water quality issues, and you showed us the, the blue-green algae, I think is what it's called.
Yes.
And that's a problem all over. I mean, there's been lakes and ponds and things that have been contaminated. Is there, I know we're just a city, we're not the state, but are we working with other entities? Is there more that we can do? Because I think that becomes a real health risk for people, because if the word doesn't get out and there's these, you know, little green water areas in our, in our community center, ponds and things like that, really, kids, not, I mean, animals too, but kids can get, you know, really sick from those things.
Certainly.
So, are we working, I guess I'm just encouraging you, I appreciate you bringing it up, and I want to make sure that as a city, we're doing all we can to help control that.
Sure. We had, I, I think last year, we had probably no less than about 10 meetings with KDHE and also with USGS. They, they do a lot of studying on the streams. We are currently helping to fund, you know, a program where we're measuring some of the blue-green algae that's coming down the Kansas River as it's released from some of the reservoirs, because obviously, we get our drinking water out of the Kansas River. Some of the localized ones, you know, some of those, the state is in a monitoring and advisory position, so we have, we've had discussions with them over that, and obviously, their interest is in some of the EPA regulatory requirements, and that we're fulfilling all of those. So, we're in the, we are in the phase right now, we've had a series of meetings every week for probably the last four weeks discussing our stormwater management plan that we have to submit to the state, and what type of monitoring and projects and are we going to do to maintain compliance to that. So, there's, there is a lot going on.
Denise, are you satisfied with that? Are there any other questions or concerns? Is everybody satisfied, or would we, we got about six minutes left. Would we like to come back and hear more? Yes.
I just appreciate that you do this. This is about, you know, we've had some good questions, it's a good soundbite to absorb. So, city manager and mayor, whoever lined it up, I appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that has any more questions or concerns? If not, Mr. Whitaker would stand for any questions, and I'm sure Mr. Rankin will as well. Thank you both, gentlemen. Great job. City manager?
Deputy Mayor, that concludes our work session.
Okay. Work session is concluded.